Thank you all for joining us tonight. This is the Planning Committee of Froomtown Council. My name's Steve Tanner. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. We'd like to make our meetings available to as many people as possible regardless of where they are. So we use a hybrid setup here in a room at the Town Hall and online via Zoom. In the room, little housekeeping, emergency exits to the rear of the room, assembly points in the car park, toilets can be accessed at the end of the corridor on the right, and there is an accessible toilet to the right of the lift outside. Any questions on Zoom, please use the electronic raised hand by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen. In the room, please raise your hand. For attendees on Zoom, please post questions through the Q&amp;A board. Attendees' names will become visible on the questions board for the record as your question is answered. Any attendees in the room, please raise your hand. Tonight, Jane McGlurk, Hannah will manage the questions board, and the participants' attendance in the meeting will be recorded for meeting purposes, and we will also livestream to our YouTube channel. Item number two, any questions, comments, information from public or councillors about things we're not going to be talking about? No? Great. Excellent. Item number three, any apologies of absence received? Item number four, any declaration of members' interests? No. Good. Item number five, to agree the minutes of the meeting held on 31st October 2024. Great. Thank you. I'll sign them.
Did everybody vote on?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was unanimous. Sorry, it's just Hannah's on the phone, and that's an emergency line, so we were just checking that it wasn't actually an emergency.
An emergency?
Yeah.
Is that all okay, Hannah?
It was okay. I think it's all good.
Good. Right. Item number six, to consider the major player applications received, and has everyone over to Jane?
Thank you very much. So the first item that we are going to discuss is number 607 on our list, and this is for the former NatWest Bank for Marketplace Froom. The description is internal and external issue alterations associated with the formation of two residential flats retaining the ground floor in commercial use. This is just the listed building consent. I'm not going to say too much more because we do have Dan Foster from Salmon Planning here and the applicants. And as you can see on the screen, I've got the site location plan, and I could not resist putting that photo from the design and access statement because I think it's a fabulous photo. There were an awful lot of very comprehensive documents submitted with the application, so it was very difficult to decide what to and what not to put on the PowerPoint. But yes, there's some photos of the internal, as it was when the bank had it, and I've got the proposed floor plans if at any point you want to refer to anything. On that note, I'm going to hand over to Dan.
Thank you, Jane. Well, just very briefly, there's already a planning permission in place. It was granted in the summer to form two flats at first floor retaining the ground floor in commercial use. Leanne and her son purchased a property in last summer?
Yes.
Last summer, after the bank vacated it. And so this is a listed building consent to do the physical works to the building. It's grade two. It's obviously a fantastic building on the outside, an important part of the marketplace, but the inside, I think it's probably fair to say, has not been treated kindly. The bank moved in during the period between the First and Second World War in the 60s and 70s. They had a series of consents to tack bits on the back near the Westway Cinema, and then in 1975, they took on the Assembly Room, which is the building on the room on the left is the former Assembly Room. It's actually nearly a whole story taller than it's above the suspended ceiling, which is the picture on the right is what exists above the suspended ceiling. So it was built as an Assembly Room, a ballroom, originally attached to the George Hotel next door and integrated internally. And the picture that Jane mentioned of the troops in the First World War, you'll see it actually had another floor. So that's on the front of that building, right-hand corner is the front door into the bank. That was a ground floor level, partially basement level, I think. Then on Cork Street, you walked in doorways that went into a ground floor, and then above was the Assembly Room. At some point, my guess, when the bank moved in, they took out the intermediate floor between basement and first floor. So there's only ground floor, which is why you feel you're kind of partly subterranean, and the Assembly Room above. So the plan is to make two flats upstairs, one of which Leanne will occupy, to reinstate as much as we can of the scale of the Assembly Room, so taking out all of that horrible suspended ceiling and returning it back to its former glory, similar scale of building to this inside, sensitively doing some works to the bits that were added in the 60s and 70s. So there's not much historic fabric left inside. So there's a lot of rejigging of partitions, which, to be honest, are 40 or 50 years old, and it gives two really quite nice, sensibly sized flats whilst keeping the whole of the ground floor ready for commercial occupation. So we think it's a great scheme. We think it reverses some of the really pretty naff bits on the elevation facing the cinema, takes off some of the horrible grills that were added in the 70s on what is now kind of a plant room in the lift shaft building, and just really upgrades the building, gives it some TLC, which I think is much needed. So we hope you can support it, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
On the ground floor, are you going to rent it out, or is it? It's purely...
We're not 100% sure of what we're going to do with it yet, but we do intend to use it ourselves as a commercial space. We've got lots and lots of ideas. We would actually like a bit of direction from councillors of what may they think would work in that space. I'd just like to also add, whilst we are doing the alterations for the upstairs, we would like to reinstate all of the pillars and the cornicing that the bank has hacked out. So it wouldn't just be a straightforward clean it up and make it a blank canvas. We'd like to put it back to how it was, so you can read it how it used to be. And the same with downstairs, for it to go back to its original, you know, size. And yeah, we'd like to put it back to how it was as opposed to sanitize the whole thing and make it look perfect and flat.
Would you be renting out one of the other flat, then? There's two.
Possibly. My son may even move in, yeah, but it would definitely just be another two residential units upstairs. We didn't want to jam-pack load. We're not developers. It's for our home. And we've had lots of ideas for downstairs, including possibly a miniature indoor independent market stalls, or it's such a beautiful space, it lends itself to being, you know, come in by lots and lots of people to see what was originally there. So that would be the idea.
So you met with Nick Dove, didn't you, earlier on?
Yes.
He does a lot of work within the town centre as one of the councillors, so.
Actually, before we even bought it, Nick had reached out to the selling agents, and they had put him in touch with myself. So we spoke, possibly about six months ago.
Excellent.
And we talked about how, you know, Froom was really independent, loved the independence as opposed to huge, great change. So that's something that we would love to embrace as well.
I'm sure as a council, we can, you know, we can have discussions about that as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
So is it the downstairs space, is that where the Assembly Room space is, or is that upstairs in one of the flats?
Assembly Room was originally upstairs.
Right.
They're the same scale.
Right.
Both the downstairs and the upstairs were completely covered in suspended ceilings.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, they're on a very similar scale.
Okay, good. Yeah, sounds good.
Hi, good evening. My name's Philip. I just wonder how much you've taken into consideration the proximity to the George, particularly the outside area at the back of the building, because I understand they have, it has been recently refurbished, but also they have plans to extend the outside area. And so in terms of, did I understand you correctly, you're taking the upper flat, and therefore the next one down, that's obviously going to be quite a bit closer to that space?
Ground floor is what abuts the George. There's no flat on the ground floor. Okay, sorry.
The next one up, yeah. And so in that sense, actually, we came first in the queue. The council granted the George alterations onto the Cork Street entrance post the flat approval. I mean, ultimately, yeah, they're cheek by jowl, and to some extent, that's town centre living. What do you do with the upper floor of that building if you don't have a viable use for it? Maybe some low-grade offices, but that's, you know, pretty low demand for that. So there's secondary glazing proposed in part of the scheme to mitigate the key bits of noise. We've tried to give bedrooms secondary outlook, so they're not, they've got windows on a couple of sides, so if it is a noisy evening, and sometimes maybe in the summer, I guess it might be, you don't have to have your only window open over the car park, over the beer garden part of the site. But that, I think, is a compromise that comes with in some kind of town centre. Yep.
And so would you be having scaffolding up, is that where it is on the corner? Like, it's quite a narrow, I live on West End, so at the end of Cork Street, so I walk past there. It's quite narrow and going around the corner, like, how would you be doing that? Because if there's scaffolding there, it's going to get quiet.
It'd be the same with any scaffold in. You have industry access all underneath with rubber, just like they've put literally a couple of days. They've been that much scaffolding in.
There has been, yeah. There has been a lot, yeah.
Yeah, and amazing what they do even on the, what's the road up to Marks and Spencer's?
Oh, King Street.
Yeah. Literally, there is no pavement. They've got scaffolding in there yesterday, and you're able to walk through that, so.
And actually, that Cork Street elevation is pretty much untouched. The works are on the, facing the Westway and on the George side and on the roof. So there's kind of a couple of options as to how you get to the roof, I guess. You know, you've got flat roofs that you could cantilever over to get up there.
Just in terms of it going to residential use, what's the car parking facilities like? Non-existent, I imagine. Yeah, yeah.
And again, whatever you do with that building, whatever you did with that building, it comes with some kind of compromise on parking because whoever occupied it, even the bank must have had staff that presumably...
Yeah, absolutely.
A few of them probably drove to work from out of town. So but in terms of sustainability, in the grand scheme of things, it can get no better for Froom.
Yeah, no, I agree.
It's the best it comes as.
Yeah.
Just got one small question regarding, I'm looking at the ground floor plan here regarding bin storage. Are you proposing sort of individual bins like we might have outside our front door, or are you proposing more the sort of commercial type in terms of storage and collection?
We've made provision on the ground floor, the passageway that comes out onto Cork Street, there's a doorway, it goes into the back of the building into the 60s extension. There's some rooms there which serve the bank but don't have much purpose otherwise. So it's quite big space. There's a communal provision there for bin storage, so they'll be brought out onto the street. They'll have to be brought on the street on collection day, but they won't have to live on the street, which...
But will they be the sort of tall ones that we have outside our own houses?
Obviously, yes.
Will they be a commercial?
Yeah, yeah. Well...
For the commercial space, they'll be commercial bins, I would expect, but they'd have to be, they'd have to fit down the alleyway.
Go down the alleyway.
For the residential, there's space to store bins within the building to be brought out on bin day.
Because there is an issue in town, and I don't know if Nick mentioned this to you, that there are X number of commercial companies collecting commercial bins, and at any one time you can walk around from, you've probably seen them, you'll see those bins out. And I know it's one of Nick's aims is to try and reduce those bins, but that's something else in terms of when you let out the commercial space. Okay, thank you.
To propose that we support this application.
And that's unanimous. Just before you go, I don't know whether you've seen the Civic Society comments that they, no? It's good. They've said technically there is a heritage gain in revealing the Assembly Room ceiling and making repairs to the roof structure, although it's a great shame that the space will not be restored to its original dimensions. No objection subject to the Conservation Officer's review of any harm to the original fabric.
That must have been this afternoon, because I looked at lunchtime.
They sent their comments to us.
Ah, cool. Okay.
I think they post them today, but they don't always go up on the same day.
You're ahead of me, then.
And just to say on the, you know, what you do with the ground floor, the commercial, I mean, when you're ready, please get in touch, and, you know, we'll happily have more discussions about, and, you know, we've got lots of contacts and so on, so.
Yeah. Thanks for coming along to talk to us about it.
Good to see you. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. All the best. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so next on the list, we have item number 599, and this is what is now called Cold Cube. I think it's formerly JR Harding up on the trading estate. And it's a prior approval notification for solar to be mounted on the two roofs, which you can see here are quite significant. I sent you through some notes about what a prior approval application actually is. So technically, they're not applying for planning permission. They're applying to see whether or not they need to apply for planning permission, and hoping that they meet a certain criteria, so they don't have to apply for planning permission. I did think it was quite important to raise this one because, you know, of all of our work with the Green and Healthy team, sustainability, et cetera, this, I think, is going to be a really good showcase for getting solar onto roofs such as in the master trading estate, where if you've ever looked at it from above or using street view, there is an incredible amount of capacity there. And I just thought that we should give it a mention, really.
Yeah, great to see. I don't know whether they need prior approval or not, but if they need to put in a planning application, I'm sure we'd just be supporting it anyway.
Absolutely.
No, really, really good to see. Be positive.
Yeah, that means great, isn't it? I mean, more of it, please.
Yeah, more like this, please.
So we're, can I support that one?
Yeah.
I propose the overall vote.
And that's unanimous as well. Thank you.
Very much support that one. Great to see.
So the next one up for discussion is our number 600 on our list, and this is another prior approval application at Edward de Sims House on Valles Road. And it's proposed to change it from commercial to 20 flats. Again, I sent you some notes out about what the prior approval determination is for because, you know, it is, it's not that straightforward. Whilst it's not a planning application, they still have to meet the test, and that is in relation to amenity, noise, transport, et cetera, et cetera. Now, this application, we have seen before, or the prior approval we've seen before, and it was refused on the grounds, that there were concerns about the collection of refuse, and how refuse vehicles would get in there, and impacts that that would have on the highway, and some other concerns about noise impacts to some of the flats closer to the existing commercial units that are still in use. So when I say it was refused, the prior approval was refused, and it said that they needed to apply for full planning. Now, rather than apply for full planning, they've amended the information that they've submitted with the prior approval, which covers the, there's a transport assessment, noise impact assessment, and yes, a lot about highway safety. So you can see the red line is the site area. This is the actual former commercial building where the 20 flats will be, and they've demonstrated the parking spaces for the flats. Up here, you've got bicycle storage area. I think the main area of contention is still refuse collection. What they're now saying is that, if I could make that a little bit bigger, they're saying that rubbish will be placed here for collection on the junction, with the junction at Robins Lane, and that the management team for the development will make sure that refuse and recycling is transported from the bin store, I haven't finished, from the bin store, to the collection point here, and then when it's been collected, it will be taken back again. Hang on, hang on. Apart from the concerns about whether or not that actually happens, the concern, if it does happen, is that we're talking about this, this entrance in here. Now, where is the refuse lorry going to stop? Don't forget, it's got to sort the rubbish from 20 flats. So the concern is, is that going to block traffic? It isn't possible for the refuse lorry to go through. This swept path analysis that they've shown shows that it's sufficient for a sort of, an average-sized commercial van to go through, but a refuse lorry wouldn't be able to get through, hence why they're saying it needs to be collected here. The concern's about noise, so this here is the roof of the building where the 20 flats will be. I think that the concerns before were possibly about these commercial units here, which are relatively close. And I think these, this is the sorting office here. But again, looking through the noise impact assessments, as you would expect, they do say that there'll be no impacts. And then lastly, some concern, I believe by the Civic Society had been raised, about the size of the flats not meeting minimum size standards. So just put those there for you. Over to you.
It's a load of rubbish.
Yeah, I waded through 200 pages on this thing. I've no problem with them looking to change use from commercial to flats, but they need to put in a full plan application.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can they put in a full planning application, please?
That's it?
Yeah.
You know, we've seen noise assessments. I mean, I could write a noise assessment to make it make sense. And the refuge is a massive, massive issue. It doesn't make sense. There is, I think, isn't it 15 or 16 metres? They've got to drag the bins from one spot to another, from memory.
And they're assuming there's going to be some rubbish monitors working as part of their team.
It's not going to happen, is it?
Steve, on that point, having read through it, they're looking at five 1,100 litre bins, the big commercial ones, and seven smaller, around about 727, 50 litres for recycling. Now, the width of the 1,100 litre bin is 1.26 metres. Now, they're proposing to take up to 12 bins down there. They wouldn't fit in that space they changed, just showed us at the end of that drive. I mean, it just isn't going to work. It's not going to work. No.
Just to say, so that it's been said, it's really nice to see that they're building or looking to build some one-bedroom flats, because I know that we've had a real shortage of that. So I just want to put in a word of encouragement that we're pleased to see an application for one-bedroom flats. It's just that it needs to be full planning application. Yeah, the size of the flats needs to be looked at, and also the solution to the rubbish.
I would also argue that if you're building one-bedroom flats, they should at least be one-bedroom, two-person flats, because the typical life cycle of most adults involves cohabiting at some point in their life.
Well, I would disagree with that. I think as someone who lives alone, I think that there's, many people have many different living situations, and we should have accommodation for everyone. I also don't know what the difference is between, like, as one person, I don't feel I take up much less space than two people in a flat. So I think they need to be a decent size, even just for one person, because people also deserve space as well.
No, I don't.
I suspect a long-term relationship would put that to the test.
I think we're, we all agree. We welcome the fact that they're looking to provide small accommodation, but we do feel it should be a full plan application.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. So next on the list is number 603 on our agenda, and this is unit 5 to 9, I don't know, hang on. So it's 5 to 9 Westway, but it refers to unit 14 in the Westway, which you all know as the former Co-op building. This application is to reinstate a previously removed entrance. So here is the floor plan that you might remember from the former Co-op building, the frontage here, and this is where the entrance is, was. What they want to do is to put in a partition here, to split that into one slightly smaller unit, and that will be achieved by putting in this new entrance here. The reason I've put this one up for discussion is as I believe this is sort of preempting temporary home, at least for the banking hub, and thought it was an important application to support.
So to be clear, my understanding is that this would be the permanent home.
Right, okay.
There is another process underway to identify an interim hub which should be located in an existing building. So I think this is a step towards a permanent banking hub. And as I understand, also, the idea is that they would use the smaller one-third unit for the banking hub, and the larger unit would be available for other uses, which are being discussed with various community organisations in town.
Seems great to me.
I'm sorry, was that, were we supporting?
That was, we support this application. Steve proposed, Fiona seconded, everybody's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Next one on the list, our agenda is number 606, and this is 62 Oakfield Road, and it is for, sorry, I've got a little box right in the way of my words. It's to prune back a sycamore to its previous points with a two-to-three metre reduction round to maintain the tree at suitable size for the garden and a distance from the property. And it involves felling to, sorry, a spruce and a lasson cypress. All of these trees are covered by a T-Tree Protection Order. You can see that in the bottom area here on the site location plan. And I think the confusion is that actually, this green area here, and you can see the property itself in the bottom corner here, has actually got a blanket tree preservation order on it. So all of the trees within that area are covered by one TPO.
So I think I need to declare an interest here. I've only just realised that I think the previous head teacher at Critch Hill is the applicant.
Okay. I think that's... Okay. I think that's probably quite a tenuous link, but declare it all the same. Yeah, thank you. So again, this is really based on the Civic Society's comments. I thought we should just air them. So they're saying they object on the grounds that the lawson cypress at least appears to be the subject to a TPO. So as I've just said, that they're all covered by a TPO. So the Civic Society warned when this development in the wooded garden of Critch Hill Villa was proposed that the building was too close to the group of substantial mature trees. No justifiable reason has been given for the works. Suppressing other shrubs and trees, which are more suitable and aesthetic to the garden and surrounding area, expresses a personal opinion and is not an adequate reason. And I've said tree officer to review.
So the sycamore is just a pruning back? And I can see that that kind of maintain a tree at a suitable size for the garden and distance from the property, I can understand that. It's, I don't know why they want to fell the spruce and the lawson. And we don't have any indication as to why, do we?
Just because they feel that they're suppressing other shrubs and trees.
I don't personally think that's a significant enough reason to fell a tree. Because if you've got a garden with trees and other plants, then you plant accordingly what will survive and won't survive and what will grow next to and under and so on. I find that quite a sort of weak reason, I think.
They are, so I've just looked at, which is Google, I couldn't pitch them, they are evergreen trees. And they are, like, they do grow quite, they can be quite big. And because they're evergreen, they keep their leaves in the winter, which means that you get shade in the winter as well. So it could be, yeah, I can kind of understand a bit more now.
Living on Wallbridge Avenue with the most giant cypress right by me, I can, I can understand that they do get quite unwieldy. But I think felling's quite a big drastic move.
Well, I mean, my view is we put TPOs on trees for a reason.
Why would the TP Os put on?
So where the houses are is actually used to be part of the grounds of Critch Hill Critch Hill Court, which had a lot of, you know, landscape gardens attached to it. And combined, those trees have a big impact on the area, the landscape. And it was felt necessary that they should be protected. Because as the Civic Society pointed out, you know, the danger is you build houses next to them, then the people who live in the houses, you know, the trees get too big, too unwieldy, and the first thing they want to do is take them down. So the TPO goes some way to controlling that. But obviously now they've put in an application to get consent to do exactly that, or to at least two of them.
Could also set a precedent as well for other trees in the area. So, yeah. Object, I think.
Certainly defer to the tree officer. I mean, whether or not...
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, we have said that, you know, don't feel that's a valid reason to fell the trees. So we, you know, we could say that and as you say, you know, defer to the tree officer for his expert advice.
Any thoughts? I mean, either we object or we... You'd like to object, Fiona, you'd like to object, so.
I think the president asserts.
Okay. Do you want to propose that and see how we go? Go on, I'll object as well.
Okay, so we have three in favour. Do we have any abstentions? And two abstentions, but that is our majority.
Interesting, Mo.
We've done that one already. So this is the last one that I've highlighted for discussion. So this is number 613 on the list, and it's
This was a shocking moment.
This is Mary Bailey Playing Fields.
No information.
And it is, the description says erection of a new skate park. As I have clarified for the couple of the other applications, this is not a planning application in the normal sense. This is an application for a certificate of lawful development. So essentially, the question is being asked through or by that certificate of lawful development is, does the proposal fall under permitted development? So therefore, is it lawful permitted development? In this instance, because Froome Town Council own the land and we are classed as a local authority when it comes to Class A permitted development. And it means that anything that is below 200 cubic metres in capacity and less than four metres in height can be deemed to be permitted development. So you can see from the plans that we actually come to 181 cubic metres and nothing is over four metres high. There was some debate about the location. However, the location is not fixed. This application was submitted before we did any community engagement up at Mary Bailey and Victoria Park. So it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily being proposed to go in that location. If it comes back and it's lawful development because it meets the criteria of permitted development, then actually it doesn't matter where it goes within there. It could go exactly where the existing skate park is. It will still be permitted development, which is the question that we're asking. I do hope any of that made some sense.
Who are we asking?
Who are we asking?
Yeah.
We're asking Somerset as the local planning authority.
So what is our role here?
Our role is to, so you may recall, we received a presentation from the Skate Group at one of our recent council meetings. And I was tasked to find out whether or not a new skate park would fall under permitted development or whether it would require a full planning application.
So in terms of this committee here, we're not, we...
We, the reason that I've put it on the list for discussion is because the Civic Society have written some comments and totally take their comments on board. I suppose I was just really clarifying that all of the things that they have mentioned, should we ever get to the stage where a new skate park goes in, whether it be where it's shown on this, on these plans, or where the existing skate park is or elsewhere, all of the things and issues that they have raised will certainly be at the foremost of our considerations.
I was surprised at how you were able to calculate the capacity or the volume of it in the way that you apparently have.
I didn't. It was, it was done by Maverick.
Right.
Who are the, they, essentially, they make skate parks. And I don't think I put, oh, is it this plan?
Yeah, there's a calculation there that shows how it comes in at 181 cubic metres.
So that's all done on a, as part of the computer software?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know, maybe it's my interpretation, but I would have expected the, the volume of that development to be as if you'd put a flat roof across its highest part and took it from there.
No, so it's only the obstacles.
It's the physical installation pieces. Okay.
Whatever you want to call them, that creates, so anything that creates volume. So the tarmac area and the sort of grassed area around it, if you like, that's not counted as volume.
Okay.
So we had a similar, similar thing that when we put the seating and planters in on the Boil Cross. So it's only the volume of the seating and the planters that are calculated, not the surface area of the Boil Cross.
Okay.
I think there's a number of things that I'm interested in this, which probably isn't part of what we're discussing today. But there seems to be a lot of cement being used in it, which holds a lot of carbon. I'm wondering how we feel about that. Also, some of the reasons about why they need a new skate park is because lots of people use it and that it's in a state of disrepair. Wondering if Victoria Park is the right place to do a larger skate park? Or is there somewhere else that maybe some of the traffic for skate parks could be moved around the town, providing opportunities for other people? But I just, I don't know enough.
So the answer to that is nor do I. I don't know. But you're absolutely right. This is, this is stage one in a long process. And all of those questions need to be answered. And I'm sure we'll be debated, discussed, whatever, when the time is right. Yes.
Thank you. I mean, it seems tricky for us to sort of get a handle on this because we're, all we're basically saying is, you know, you're informing us that a skate park of this particular type of design may be. I mean, I would certainly object to where it's positioned at the moment because it's almost in the middle of the biggest green space in that area. My second point in question is, does that mean in the negotiations and discussions that have taken place that the existing skate park, which you say needs lots of repair, does that then come out? Is that then completely defunct? Or could that not be reutilised as a smaller skate park for different aged children?
Again, I don't know.
We're going way, way too far. We're looking, well, we're actually not looking at anything here. It's not a decision. It's, but basically, all we're, all they're looking for is, is it a permitted development to move that skate park? That's it.
Or replace it in the existing location.
Can I?
Anything after that is subject to a planning application, and that's when all the do.
Can I just sort of fill in a bit? So where this came about is they came and presented an oversight committee meeting. And obviously, there's been sort of a desire for a new skate park for you for a long time. And so the conversation, they think that the best place for it is here. And so before sort of exploring other locations, which, you know, there's nothing obvious that sort of stands out. It was like, let's see whether we could, whether it would actually work here first. And then if it can't, if it won't, because of the noise from the residents and the stuff and everything, we can knock that off and then we can look elsewhere, basically. So it's sort of like just trying to knock something down and then we can move on, basically, is the point of what we're doing at the moment, I think.
There are so many considerations other than whether or not it needs planning permission that are still to be discussed.
Not even sure we should be voting on this.
No, 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 it's, I didn't raise it for you to vote on because, you know, whether anybody objects or supports it, that's actually irrelevant. It's a determination based on its size. But I just thought, given that the comments of the Civic Society that have been raised, it was just important just to, you know, maybe clarify a few things for you.
Noted.
So we don't have to vote on this? Good.
Was there any, ever any discussion regarding, and it's pertaining to what Fiona was just saying about site? Was there any discussion of perhaps going for something bigger with a Vello Park or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because, because some authorities have actually gone for skateboard park and a Vello Park, which actually then becomes income generating and actually draws in a lot of local people. It's a cycle.
Oh, okay.
It's like a track. And there is a league across the country and you could actually concentrate all that in one.
I think the point is, this is very much the first, or maybe the second step in a long conversation. So at that presentation, the skateboarding people were really keen on, it's going to be cheaper and better and ideal for us if we can do something in Victoria Park. And we said, we'll go away and explore if that's even a possibility. Once we get an answer to this, we can pick up that conversation in a more informed way.
Further to Phil's comment, perhaps a Lido in the summer, which could then be a skateboard in the autumn winter.
Right, can we stop? Just stop, okay? Thank you.
So, thank you, Chair. Are there any other applications on the list that we haven't discussed that you've got any questions or comments on?
No, happy for you two. I propose we go through those.
And that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Jane. Thank you, everybody, I think. The next meeting is on the 12th of December, last one of the year. Just before Christmas. Pub afterwards. Mince pies will be provided by someone. Thank you very much. Good night. At 7pm.